If everyone could please make sure to mute your microphones if you're not speaking. Thank you.
Hey, this is Candace French Contreras. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Do you want me to go ahead and start?
Uh, yeah, unfortunately, my laptop decided to go through update, so I'm on the phone. Yeah, please get started.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name, good afternoon. My name is Anna Armenta. I am the Arizona Racing Commission Secretary. Today is November 1st, 2024. This is a special Arizona Racing Commission taking place via Google Meet. I will call the roll. Madam French Contreras?
Yes.
Vice Chair Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Coolidge?
Present.
Commissioner Zucker?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. It is now 1:02 PM in the floor is yours, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, welcome folks. Since you know this is a special meeting and I'm going to give you a couple of small ground rules here. We only have our legal advisor, Jean Galvin, for 30 minutes. So, um, if we have an executive session, we need to do that pretty quick. I'm not telling you we're going to end the meeting in 30 minutes, but I am telling you that we've got to get some things out of the way, uh, within 30 minutes. So with that, I'm also want to limit the length of time that we have comments. Keep in mind that this matter is as to whether or not we're going to race tomorrow. Um, we're not going to go into the list or anything else. We're going to keep it to the track safety and track conditions. Um, with that, before I get started on anything further, do I have any comments or concerns from our fellow commissioners?
Madam Chair, um, counselor advisor is raising her hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, this is Jean Galvin. I just want you to know that my, um, other commitment has been rescheduled, so I'm available to the commission for however long.
Wow, thank you very, very much. We appreciate that at the last minute. All right. So with that, the matter is discussion, consideration, and possible action on the 45-day conditional approval of the, or conditional approval of the commercial horse racing permit issued to Terraparade Paradise on October 28th, 2024. Um, could I have a motion to go into executive session? From one of my--
Excuse me, Madam Chair Val Marciano.
Yeah.
Has roll call, has roll call been, um, conducted for the commissioners? I, I just hear it.
Yes, we have a quorum. We have four.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session and then folks will get back as soon as we can and I'll give everybody an opportunity to speak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anna?
Thank you with the motion by Madam Chair and a second by Vice Chair Olson. Um, I will call the roll. Madam Chair? Contreras?
Yeah. Yes.
Vice Chair Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
With the total of four yeses, thank you. That motion passes and it is 1:05 PM and we will move into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks will be back as quick as we can. We only have our legal advisor, Jean Galvin, for 30 minutes. So, um, if we have an executive session, we need to do that pretty quick. I'm not telling you we're going to end the meeting in 30 minutes, but I am telling you that we've got to get some things out of the way, uh, within 30 minutes. So with that, I'm also want to limit the length of time that we have comments. Keep in mind that this matter is as to whether or not we're going to race tomorrow. Um, we're not going to go into the list or anything else. We're going to keep it to the track safety and track conditions. Um, with that, before I get started on anything further, do I have any comments or concerns from our fellow commissioners?
Madam Chair, um, counselor advisor is raising her hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, this is Jean Galvin. I just want you to know that my, um, other commitment has been rescheduled, so I'm available to the commission for however long.
Wow, thank you very, very much. We appreciate that at the last minute. All right. So with that, the matter is discussion, consideration, and possible action on the 45-day conditional approval of the, or conditional approval of the commercial horse racing permit issued to Terraparade Paradise on October 28th, 2024. Um, could I have a motion to go into executive session? From one of my--
Excuse me, Madam Chair Val Marciano.
Yeah.
Has roll call, has roll call been, um, conducted for the commissioners? I, I just hear it.
Yes, we have a quorum. We have four.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session and then folks will get back as soon as we can and I'll give everybody an opportunity to speak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anna?
Thank you with the motion by Madam Chair and a second by Vice Chair Olson. Um, I will call the roll. Madam Chair? Contreras?
Yeah. Yes.
Vice Chair Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
With the total of four yeses, thank you. That motion passes and it is 1:05 PM and we will move into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks will be back as quick as we can.
This is Chair Candace French Contour.
I can't tell if we have all of them in, but I believe we have. I think we do.
Okay.
Go ahead and start.
Uh, yeah, speak a role and we'll see if we've got everybody.
Okay. Um. Madam French Contreras?
Yes.
Vice Chair Olson? Vice Chair Olson?
Okay, we'll come back to her.
Commissioner Coolidge?
Present.
Commissioner Zucker?
Present.
Vice Chair Olson?
Present, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, we have a quorum, it is 1:30 PM in the floor's rest, thank you.
Thank you, alright, we're back in regular session, um, I want to remind everybody, we do have some public comments that uh, are waiting in line, before we do that, let's look at um, individuals directly affected, do we have anybody that needs, wants to speak on this matter before I go to public comment?
Madam Chair, if I may be heard?
Yes, sir.
So, I have a couple of questions, uh, that will probably be directed at turf, and I would like the horseman's input as well. Uh, you know, I think namely my frustration is that here we are yet again on Friday. Uh, not only that the track is not ready, but specifically because we just had this conversation a few days ago. Um, more importantly, with the Heisa information that's come across our desk, the first question that I have is probably to the department considering the track availability, so from my read of this, we're talking about the grass track, has the turf track been evaluated at all?
Mr. Duncan, do you have any information on that?
Oh yes, Madam Chair, um, to the best of my knowledge, I believe the turf track has been approved. As in racing wise, um, there was no, no conditions that were, uh, were needed to be upgraded on that, with the exception of the rail, there was issues that have been discussed.
Great, thank you, secondly, uh, as far as Turf Paradise goes, I know that they have been uh, moving heaven and earth and, and getting whatever equipment that they can do there, I'd also like to applaud them for working hand in glove with the horsemen, I've heard very good things on both sides, my next question is with the horsemen. Um, I know that you are not going to put your blood and treasure in harm's way, uh, as far as the grass track goes, we know that that needs to be fixed. I wonder with the turf track, is that something that we could utilize? Um, and frankly, are the horsemen feeling okay about the conditions? And need not sure coat as you normally do not, because to me, that is the only way that we're going to be able to fix this thing, so um, would, would love to hear input on y'all's side on that.
Mr. Yoker, are you available?
Just, uh, yes Chair, Lady Lloyd Yoker here on the HBP A. I understand, uh, what Commissioner Coolidge is saying, that was brought up at our uh, board meeting this morning, however, since that time, I've thought it through and I've come up with a couple of maybe considerations. If we do run Saturday, uh, on the turf track, that stops all the work on the main track for half a day on Saturday. And I have a, uh, I have a, uh, recommendation that we could try to work through the weekend and have the track ready for Monday morning. And have Heisa come in and give us a check to see if we can start racing on Tuesday. But I don't know if we're not racing Saturday yet or not, I, I have no uh, say in that matter, that's up to the commission, but, uh, the, the turf track, uh, there's several issues that applaud the, uh, recommendation from, uh, Director Coolidge. Um, I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Coolidge, but there's a lot of things that works against it as well, so I'm kind of perplexed at what we do, how we go from here.
Mr. Yoker, this is Candace.
Yes ma'am.
One concern is, I know the turf tracks can only take limited amount of work, they can't start running a bunch of breezing a bunch of horses and racing a bunch of horses, and you can't race the horses without working them, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, um, the other thing you mentioned, being able to, to get it ready for racing on Tuesday. My question is, is there sufficient water in order to do that, and is there sufficient, there would have to be all four, um, machines running, and I would think 24, 24 hours a day, how, how is that going to happen? Because they're saying five to seven days.
Uh, well, our track man, uh, has talked to what's his name, my friend? Was it? Gil, Gilfor, uh, Mr. Gilfor about that we could reduce the time if we could work it 24/7 or, uh, two shifts or whatever it may, may need to get it done. To answer your question on water, we do, we did get a new water pump put in yesterday. I spoke with Vince Francia, the track, uh, the, uh, track manager yesterday. He says the, the new pump's working, matter of fact, it's working so well, it's overflowing the the storage tanks, and I said, beautiful, that's, that's a good deal, so I'm assuming that it's still working from last night. And we do have the water, our water trucks are still in, in question because of, uh, their, uh, um, lack of, uh, 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 whatever, I mean, the consistency of the water in each one of those, we've got three water trucks. The consistency of the water that it put out are in, are different, so it's, it's making it difficult to keep the track moist in certain areas and not so much in other areas, so that, but we've got enough, we've got enough that we can work through the weekend and try to get it ready for, uh, Monday Heisa's check if, if at all possible. Uh, I'm hoping that answers your question.
Reminding you, next week is the first race, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, so it'd be the rest of today, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. But you have to also assume that you could get Heisa out there and/or the track surfacing testing lab, whichever it took in order to certify that that track was ready, and you're assuming you can do that?
I can clarify that for you.
Yes, first.
We would have to work the track today, Saturday, multiple shifts, Sunday. We would have to have it ready Sunday night for Heisa, which has committed to having the testing truck, uh, and equipment here Monday morning. They have committed to that, if we can get, if we can get the track ready, that doesn't say that it's going to pass. Uh, we won't know that until they get here, but we'd have to, we'd have to work the track from today forward till Sunday night. Have them come in on Monday morning, uh, do their test on the track and either pass it or not pass it, and if they pass it, we could, we could race on Tuesday. If they don't pass it, then we're back to square one with, how many days is it going to take to get the track ready? Uh, I can't really answer those questions for you.
So, I would.
It would be my recommendation, if, if we do not run Saturday, uh, that's up to the commission, but if we do not run Saturday, I'd like to have the opportunity to be able to work the track between now and Sunday night, have Heisa come in here on Monday and see if we can race on Tuesday.
With the understanding that you may need to postpone it longer until such time that you've got a report of a safe track that's ready to run, correct?
If they, if they pass it, fine, if they don't pass it, then we, we're back to square one, we're going to start again.
Commissioner Coolidge, does that answer your, your question?
Yes ma'am, the only other one that I have on my, uh, to-do list is whether or not we can continue to have the horses practice.
Well, I, we can't run the horses on the tracks if they're working the tracks, so it's one or the other.
That's, uh, uh, Madam Chair, uh, that's another issue. If we're shut down more than two, three days, four days, uh, we've got a serious problem with thoroughbred, uh, horses that need to be exercised on some some ways of, if, if only jogging or, uh, but not working, but we'd have to be able to maybe stop for a couple of three hours in the mornings to let horsemen get the thoroughbreds out and then come back to work in the track, but the track, it depends on what condition the track's in, when they need to get the horses out for training.
And just hand walking won't do it?
I'm sorry, say again?
Hand walking or just ponying them?
Yeah, it, it, it could do it, I don't know what the trainers are going to say about it, but, uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, they'd have to be, they'd have to be, uh, uh, hot walkers.
Mm-hmm, right. Do I have any other, um, comments from parties of interest before I move to public comment?
Chair, this is Commissioner Olson, if, if I could ask a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I was just hoping that the, uh, the department could also, um, for the record and just for the benefit of everybody here, to um, kind of describe some of the safety concerns, um, with the current condition of the track.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, if you don't mind, I, I do have four points um, that I concentrated on. So, uh, on, uh, uh, June 24th, in the letter, it required that Turf Paradise repair the inconsistencies um, of the track depth, uh, where the inner rail fluctuates. Creating areas too low for the horses, um, and the rider's safety. Uh, basically for the first five inner lanes and the surface too deep. And the opposite is true on the outer lanes, creating fairness issues. Um, on Tuesday and Wednesday this week, I did measure the depth of the track. Uh, both in the front stretch and the back stretch. Um, I took, uh, three different areas along the rail. And then, uh, I did five different points going from the layup, rail up to the outside. In the, uh, in the front stretch, I got, uh, readings, um, three and a half to four inches on the rail. Um, two and a half to three inches in the middle, and then two inches or less on the outside. Uh, and then on the back stretch, I also got, um, variations of three and a half inches, three and a half to five inches on the rail. Um, three and a half inches to three inches in the middle, and then two to three inches again on the outside. Um, I did measure the front stretch again this morning. It was three to three and a half on the rail, two to two and a half in the middle, and one and a half to two inches or less on the outside. And then in the back stretch, uh, they, the track crew, uh, was working on it, it was being graded to reduce the, uh, the approximate 10-inch drop-off that's shown here, um, um, on the rail, um, so I did not measure it. Um, another point, um, in the letter, it stated on June 24th that Turf Paradise use four identical harrows for, and, uh, four tractors, or however many are needed, uh, in excellent working condition to efficiently reset the track. Um, on Wednesday, October 30th, around 2:00 PM, uh, I inspected and observed three new tractors and a disc tiller that arrived. Um, all three tractors had dual, uh, wheels on the front and the back. Um, uh, Turf did ask that the front dual, uh, be taken off, uh, which they were the very next day, so that they only had duels on the back, singles on the front. Uh, the disc tiller was not able to be, uh, was not usable. Um, and another one, uh, did get ordered, uh, around 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM Wednesday, uh, another, uh, one tractor was hooked up, uh, to the harrows and tested, uh, on the track. Uh, it seemed to, in my opinion, seemed to, to work for, really well. On Thursday, October 31st, the fourth tractor, the new tractor, uh, also showed up. And then the different rototiller, um, also arrived. Um, as of today, that, all the tractors do have, um, dual wheels on the back, singles on the front. Uh, but the rototiller has not been implemented as of yet. Third point, uh, again, June 24th letter, required that Turf Paradise have better water management and water trucks, um, uh, to be brought up to expectations or addressed by other means. Um, this was to both, uh, help the inner rail and outer rail, uh, get watered equally. Um, we, uh, in the last meeting, I said they did add a 12,000, another 12,000 gallon tank. Um, I did, uh, they did say they were going to put in a pump, which I inspected this morning, it is a new pump this morning. Um, talking again to the, uh, water crew, um, it is, as Lloyd was saying, is it filling very efficiently and, um, is, uh, very, uh, much more easy to fill the trucks now. Um, the only thing in question is basically the reliability of the, the water trucks and the distribution of the water. Um, as Mr. Uh, Yoker said, sometimes it, it gives out a little bit and sometimes it'll give out too much. Uh, which makes it wet on the inside or on the outside and dry in areas. Um, fourth point was, um, again, on the June 24th letter, uh, asset turf, uh, grade both the main track, the training track, um, to grade and then be brought back into compliance with specifications, uh, prior to the start of the meet. Some of the recommendations for compliance included inner and outer rail height being between 40 and 50 inches. On Sunday, uh, approximately 48 sleeves were added to the main track on the outside, in the back stretch to bring it to at least a minimum of 40. On Wednesday, October 30th, approximately 10 to 12 sleeves were added to the far turn of the training track. And as of this afternoon, um, as I was driving around, they were adding more on the main track in the back stretch. Um, there are some other areas that need attention, but, uh, again, they are still working on that. And then, uh, one of the other, um, recommendations was good grading to remedy the track's banking and consistency issues. Uh, which included, uh, the use of a blade with slope or GPS control. Um, this morning, um, talking to the, uh, track crew, um, since the GPS and possibly the blade or on the current grader at Turf was believed to not be 100% accurate, and the blade was brought in this morning. Uh, the track crew began using the new grader on the back stretch around 5:00 AM this morning. Um, getting that back stretch rail down to grade. Uh, I took a, another tour prior to the meeting, so as of noon today, they're still working diligently on the back stretch rail. Um, just want to thank you for allowing me to provide a quick update on the conditions and equipment of the track, uh, this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Chair, may I ask a, a few follow-up questions?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Duncan, for the update and for, um, uh, the, the diligence and, and your review, based on your, your personal, I, I guess, observation and inspection of, of the track and, um, and also based on the, the information that we've received. Is it the department's opinion that it's currently unsafe until those items that you've just described are, um, resolved?
Um, I, I, I'll be honest, I'll give you my recommendation that the, the, the delay, the start of the racing season um, is necessary, uh, for the preparations and the improvement of the the track surface with all the information we have received from Heisa as well.
Okay, it's my understanding that Heisa, um, has concluded that it's, uh, the track is currently unsafe. And, and that Heisa's conclusion is based on, um, racing surfaces, testing laboratories conclusions, is that right?
Oh yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh, this is Jerry Kim, may I ask a question, Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, my question to Mr. Duncan is, uh, uh, Mr. Duncan, uh, how do you feel about, I know we've had, we've got about 1,150 horse- Uh, my question to Mr. Duncan is uh, uh, Mr. Duncan, uh, how do you feel about, I know we've had, we've got about eleven hundred and fifty horses there. And I know the importance for the health of the animals to get some exercise. Uh, with the work that you're seeing in progress and knowing that we've been working horses straight through, including timed workouts. Would you feel comfortable? And by the way, I go along with what Lloyd Yoder said fully. Uh, the idea of doing uh, you know, not racing and um uh working that track uh all the hours and trying to and and getting the folks out to retest the track on Monday. But my question for Mr. Duncan is, how do you feel with the work you see going on? To let horses jog but not timed workout, so you're not putting any push pushing the horse. But you're letting the horse out of the uh barn during this time and maybe a three hour period in the morning to interrupt the work on the track to let those animals have that time to gallop. Thank you.
So um, M- Mr. Sims, at at this time, um, I don't, I don't believe they've had adequate time to um basically make the necessary preparations and the improvements to the surface. Um, in in time will tell, but as of right now, I I can't answer it that way um until we see more that's been done.
Uh, per thank you for your answer. Uh, perhaps we can look at it in a day or so and get your opinion if you think there's enough improvement to let horses jog on that uh because I am concerned about them being in the in the barn, you know, for that length of time without getting some exercise.
Madam Chair, I understand you may be on the phone. I've got my hand up too. I'd like to speak on this issue as well.
Yes, sir, please, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to carry you through what's already been said. To my knowledge, as of this morning and noon, when I left the racetrack. We've got tractors, we've got harrows, we've got somewhat uh capabilities of watering the track, maybe not as efficiently as we need to. Uh, we have um uh blades, we've got the old blade that can only rip the track. We've got a uh a riddled blade down from fresh cut that can do the blading and we've got one that's supposed to be delivered. It should be being delivered, if not already there, that puts three of them. And the process is on the racetrack, they've got to rip it and blade it. And then they go to the tractors and um the harrows and start harrowing and then it's not a just a it's not just a one one and done uh proposition. Uh, that's kind of where we're at. I think if we got permission to go ahead and see if we can get the track ready for uh Monday morning for 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 Heisa to come in and do their testing and get us straight, then we can, we can survive. I will say this, that management at Turf Paradise has been more than willing to do what was needed. Unfortunately, it's uh last minute, uh but there again, I if I might make a comment too, all this seems to be last minute. First of all, Heisa was supposed to come in here October the fif- uh excuse me, November the fifteenth. That was after racing, after racing had started for two weeks. I uh uh the horsemen threw up a a red flag saying we need you here before then. They said, okay, we'll be there October the twenty first. I had a trip to take and I couldn't take that trip, so I postponed the trip for that day. They called on the twenty first, said they couldn't be here the twenty eighth. And then they they came in here and did their testing and we got the test results on the thirtieth, uh which was two days ago. Uh, my 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 point is, is that every, all this is reaction, no proactive. Uh, and we, there's enough blame or not blame, there's enough errors been made to go around to all 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 departments, including the the federal, the state, the management and whatever. But anyway, that being said, I I think that we're in a position that we can work the track and try to make this work for next week. If it doesn't work, then we have to go to plan B and 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 continue working the track until we can get it signed off from Heisa. That's uh uh I'll entertain any questions you may have, but uh and I I'd like to say too, my horsemen, my horsemen and our organization is first and foremost the horse and rider, period. No trainers, no owners, no management, no, no nothing. Paramount in our our minds. So keeping that in mind, we want to do what's right, so we'll do to to progress as as fast as possible, if that if that's feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My question to you again, just for clarification, it's twofold. If we stop work, if the track was even safe enough to run on, which we are even breeze on, which we don't know, to gallop these horses. It's taking time away from working it and it sounds like you'd be under a twenty-four seven timeframe anyway. And again, that's what hot walkers, I mean, it's not the best solution, but there's hot walkers there and there's hand walking available. If this is a three day uh timeframe until these horses can go back on that track, correct?
I I totally agree and I'm not sure that we would be able to even gallop horses or not. It may be the fact that we have to 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 keep off of it until we get the test back on Tuesday. Uh, because we would have to shut down um repairs on the track for that two or three hour period for people to jog horses. It wouldn't be any works, it wouldn't be any timing trials, it wouldn't be any gates, it would just be galloping, but it may interfere with the, it's a hard decision to call, but like I say, the horse and the riders first and foremost. And if it takes, if it takes shutting it down to uh uh till Monday, uh then so be it, but uh that's my my personal opinion and my board's opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Contreras, this is Dr. Mandy Holland. If I could interject for a quick moment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, but yes, I, it's a heavy concern. We have horses ready to race tomorrow. Um, training is a timing issue. I agree wholeheartedly with the safety. The training track is sitting in the back and it is my understanding and investigating that it is so-called unsafe to use because of the railing height. Is that correct or not? And then secondly, if a repair is needed for the railing to get the training track ripped, disced and harrowed to provide an option while the main track is being fixed. Um, I have gone ahead and reached out to my brother who works in general contracting and construction to ask if we could put an emergency crew of a couple of different welding units together to heighten the rail at the training track on an emergency basis to get that up and used. Is that a potential option? And would there be a budget to cover the cost of that? And if so, um, is that an idea that the racetrack would entertain? Because I I do have the potential to have crews ready to come in as soon as we say go.
Um, Mr. Francia.
Agreed, Mr. Francia.
Comment, Mr. Francia?
Yes, Madam Chair, on on what topic would you like me to comment?
Her, um, Dr. Um, Mandy's uh suggestion about the training track, yes, sir.
Uh, I I would first want to, uh, I I first want to check with the uh staff that's raising the rail back on the training track. Uh, because it may be near completion. Um, the 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 rail is not the issue because we've been working on that for some time. But the the training track is not prepared to the uh meaning the earth to receive horses. Now, we can move our staff which is working on the main track back there, but that's self-defeating because now we're taking them off the main track.
I'm a tractor driver, Vince. I would volunteer to drive a tractor to rip the training track tomorrow. There's plenty of people that you could throw in that equipment to rip the track, me being one of them.
Uh, I appreciate the offer.
Here in my services even, if you would pay the work comp on it.
I appreciate the offer.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Holland, hold on, he's speaking. Go ahead.
I appreciate the offer. I'm trying to address the chairman's uh um questions. First, I would want to find out again where Vinny, Vinny and his crew take care of the rails. Where he is on the training track, the work may be done. Uh, secondly, if we're shifting uh people from the main track, and these are people who um are are familiar with the equipment plus what to do uh out there to the training track, then it's taking work time away from the main track and that seems to be the main goal. Um, so that that track gets up and is ready for inspection, Heisa inspection as soon as is possible.
Okay, um, yes, sir. Let's stay on focus with the the racetrack and secondary, depending on what the commission decides if if you two, Dr. Holland and Mr. Francia, want to speak further about the possibility of getting the training track running, then that's something that you can address on your own. In the meantime, um, hot walkers and hand walking is available. Do I have anybody else raising their hand before I go to call to the public?
Yes, ma'am, uh, Chair, this is Kimberly, I'm a trainer.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have uh one horse entered for tomorrow and two on Tuesday. So my my biggest thing is, as everybody's talking about, uh, to not be able to be on the racetrack. It's not a point of being on hot walkers because we walk them on the hot walkers every day. But it's actually physically getting them on the track. And and being on that surface and being able to move at a fluent uh pace where on the or they cannot do that. So is it a possibility that, uh, I have been at other racetracks where they have closed down galloping but allowed jogging? So maybe where, and here again brings in the training track possibly as uh with it being the inside rail, that's the question. If you're jogging, that means you're on the outside and you jog in reverse. So is that maybe a possibility where galloping is not okay? Um, whether it be that we use the main track or the training track and jogging is approved for a couple of days because honestly, for me to take two horses that haven't run since September in Emerald and haven't been on the track for a few days and put them on a surface that's changed to run, i- it's not, it's not safe, it's not fair. Um, I and I realize we'd all be in the same boat, but I don't particularly like the idea of not being able to have my horse on the surface. Thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Your expertise and and your thoughts are appreciated. Um, anybody else before I go to call to the public?
Uh, this is uh Jerry Sims, just want to make one quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Horses, horses that were preparing, we had seventy-eight horses that were prepared to run Saturday. And they've given those horses bute and uh I want to reimburse all of them for any uh preparation medication that they had to give to the animals. Uh, and we'll do that uh directly, perhaps through the horse and bookkeeper will find a mechanism to do it, but I want to repay all their costs.
Sims. Thank you, sir. We'll address that depending on what the commission determines that the conclusion of this meeting. Mr. uh Braddock, Craig Braddock, did you have a comment? On call to the public?
Madam Chairman, you got the Jay Zucker that got his hand up.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Um, brief question uh to Mr. Duncan. We were talking about equipment earlier. What is the status of the horse ambulance truck? I understand that uh we've had some issues with that.
I can answer that, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
The latest information I had as of about noon today, I talked to Vince Francia about what we would do about the water truck and the truck ambulance. And they have, uh, they, meaning Turf Paradise, has made an agreement with with um Canterbury to, the Canterbury's going to ship us, my understanding that it's been approved by Mr. Sims, they're shipping three water trucks and a horse uh truck ambulance, uh possibly this week and hopefully be here by the weekend. So that will solve more of our problems, but we're still kind of under the gun. If that answers your question, sir.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Richard Zucker, anything else before I move to uh call to the public?
No, not at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Braddock, are you on the phone? If not, I'll move to Mr. Nolan and Mr. Nolan, please keep it brief because we've got a short timeframe here.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Chair. Okay, thank you, Chair and members and audience. Uh, the concern I have is with this agendaized item. Before, before I could really make a comment, uh you went in executive session and one of the things that we're lacking in transparency is what are the powers of the commission? What do they have the right?
Mr. Nolan, we're going to keep this to the track issue. We can bring up other issues at another meeting, but let's keep this strictly to the safety of the track. Do you have any comments to that effect?
I I'm talking about the agendaized item that is before you right now and it says possible action on the conditional permit approved, including but not limited to the possible summary suspension eh of the same and the legal remedies available to the commission. What I want is transparency on what those legal remedies are. We don't know what powers you have. That's the agenda I I, it doesn't say anything in this item that you're talking about about tomorrow's racing.
Mr. Nolan, we'll bring that back around at another time. Dr. V. Filippo, do you have any comment?
Yes, 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 sorry, I had done mute.
Yes, ma'am. Hi.
Uh, hi, how are you?
I'm fine.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Joanda Filippo. First and foremost, I want to state that safety is my utmost concern as was stated previously by others. However, what has occurred is really a travesty that was completely unnecessary. As an owner of both thoroughbreds and quarter horses and an owner who had a horse scheduled to run in Saturday's races, I feel this is a matter that requires further investigation. This could have been prevented. It appears the Department of Racing has been working with the track since June, as we saw with Brian's report. But it also appears something remained remiss. When Hisa shows up on October twenty-third, only one week prior to opening day and the issues demands that should have been addressed in June, July, August, September and even October. It only demonstrates something is truly amiss. The concern I have is why is this now being brought up? We've been training horses on the main track for almost one month. What changed in the scope of getting the track ready to have Hisa at the last minute declare a recommendation to delay open race day? Have my horses been training on an inferior track? And if so, why did the department and Hisa allow this to occur? My concern stems not from castigations or accusations about who is at fault for this delay, but rather from the costly burden experienced by the horsemen and the subsequent devastation played out in the media as we all saw in Blood Sport uh article. All of this could have been prevented if people had done their jobs. Therefore, in closing, I'm requesting two items. I would like to see a full report on what occurred, the responsibilities for this costly and grave error and how action will be taken to prevent an occurrence of this nature in the future. I would like this to be a public report. Many of us are not at the track daily and dependent upon others to provide us details and updates. We simply don't know the full aspect of what is occurring. And secondly, and this piggybacks on what Mr. Sims just said. I would like to see the establishment of a remuneration fund, probably similar to reparations for reimbursement of horse-related expenses incurred by those horsemen and professionals who entered and prepared horses for Saturday, November second races. As well as a daily rate paid to licensed horsemen and track at Turf Paradise and backside personnel for any subsequent race days that are delayed and are canceled from today forward. People's lives are dependent upon earning a living at the racetrack. For many, this is their office, their place. upon earning a living at the racetrack. For many, this is their office, their place of work, and it is how they put food on the table and take care of their families. Who is going to help us locate the number of handwalkers needed to keep the horses in shape over the next week? We can't even find gallopers, let alone the handwalker, let alone pay these individuals. Remuneration of expenses is not the answer, surely. But it will help ease the hardship this delay has cost to everyone at the racetrack. Thank you.
Dr. D. Filippo, thank you very much for your insight and your thoughts. Do I have anybody else raising their hand before I ask our commissioners for their thoughts?
I have my hand raised again on a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Dr. Mandy Holland. Following up with Dr. Filippo's comment, where does Dr. Sue Gale and Dr. Alyssa Butler stand as far as their views and opinions on track safety as well? And could there be liability for horses that have been euthanized or had breakdown issues during this time period that Hysa feels that this track has been unsafe?
Well, I don't think that anybody can provide you a legal opinion. That would be something you'd have to seek out on your own as.
But what, what, yeah, I'm looking for the opinion of Dr. Gale and Dr. Butler, who are up watching the works and watching the horses on this racetrack that seems to be at issue. I mean, what is their professional thoughts on this?
On whether or not the track is unsafe today, or what exactly is your question?
For the past, for the past month, has it gotten better? Has it gotten worse?
If you'd like me to, this is Dr. Gale. If you'd like me to respond, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The statement, I'm going to read one statement that is part of the end of meet report that we provided to Hysa last June. And it required, and we have the Racing Safety and Welfare Committee. It's a committee that's made up of the track management, their turf, our track superintendent, medical personnel. It also has horsemen representatives, breeders, trainers, owners, as well as the HBPA, a jockey's representative, and then State Department of Gaming Racing Division personnel, myself. I was the chair of this committee. And again, I'll read the statement we did in the end of the meet report because it's pretty concise. And it was, please provide a summary of the findings from our meetings. Track surface. Extensive work was done to the dirt and turf tracks prior to the meet. The consensus was that the dirt track was in excellent condition at the beginning of the meet. The track condition deteriorated and became inconsistent over the course of the meet. And that's the dirt track, I should say. The track maintenance crew is hardworking and diligent, but the available equipment didn't maintain the dirt track in satisfactory condition. The turf course was not ready for racing when the meet began on January 29th, 24. The first races on turf were conducted on March 5th, 2024. The other points I would raise is, again, pointing to the turf track that was not ready for racing. It needed more time to be properly conditioned. We did have two breakdowns on the turf track last meet, and that's about five times higher than you would expect. That's a rate of five per thousand. Turf tracks are generally regarded safer than dirt tracks. We only had two breakdowns on the dirt track, and the rate there was about one per thousand. So given that the track was becoming inconsistent over the course of the meet, we still seem to be fortunate in not having breakdowns during racing. On the same account, I would say that, just my general opinion is that the track is in similar to condition toward the end, as it was toward the end of the meet in May. And I believe that's supported by the Racing Testing Laboratory Report, both from February of '24 and the most recent one. We did have three horses get injured last week. Two were catastrophic. One was not as severe, but likely will result in retirement of the horse from racing. So that was over the course of four or five days. That happens sometimes where you can have a number of horses in a short period of time, doesn't always mean that the surface of the track is the problem. But again, the inconsistencies in the track are a concern, and that was a concern that our committee discussed over the, over our meetings during the last meet. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have any further comments or possible motion from my fellow commissioners? Well, it's, I'm sorry, I'm on the phone, so it's hard. Is somebody speaking?
Madam Chair, that's Brian. Brian, we cannot hear your.
Ah, thank you.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just had a simple question. Why isn't Hysa on this call? They're the ones that made the recommendation. There's no representative from Hysa on this call? I don't understand why.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from commissioners or staff?
Chair, I suppose, I have a question. Is it, sorry, Commissioner Olson, for turf, and I'm wondering if they would be open to a written agreement regarding the delay of racing, just generally, and I'll let them respond to that.
Mr. Francia, would you, go ahead. Mr. Sims, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know exactly what you mean. I like what I'm hearing from Lloyd, who's, you know, speaking with his board today, and the recommendations of holding off till Monday and hope to have it tested on Monday and continue the work that's being done. But I'm not sure we're kind of in agreement that you mean. I just would be in favor of whatever is going to be good for the track and the animals.
Yes, sir. I believe what Vice Chair Olson is suggesting is that Turf Paradise enter into an agreement with the commission, Racing Commission, that they will not run on the track and give it an opportunity through Monday to be worked, tested, hopefully be ready for racing on Tuesday, and do that voluntarily without the commission having to take any formal action. And then, of course, that would be contingent on the track being tested and approved as safe on Monday evening by Hysa. Is that what you're suggesting, Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Chair. And also, the recommendation of the department that the race is, the track is safe. So it would be kind of a combination between the department's judgment and Hysa's approval.
Commissioner Olson, 100%. I am never, and I've been there 24 years, I've never done anything, nor would I ever. It's not what the commission recommends or decides. 100%, we will go along with whatever you decide to do what you're referring to. I'll agree to that.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Galvin, would we need a motion to that effect, or would that be something, just an agreement between the Racing Commission and Turf Paradise that they would enter into themselves and would be supervised by staff with a report back to the commission? Or do we need a motion?
I would recommend that a motion be made, that there be an attestation by Mr. Sims, that there will be no live racing until further order of the commission, and that the repairs to the track be overseen by commission staff, and that once the permittee believes that the tracks or tracks are in safe condition, then Hisa would come and evaluate that, and that determination would be made by Hisa and commission staff. And I would recommend that that verification, or lack thereof, of the track's safety is reviewed by board staff in conjunction with commission chair. And if it is determined that it is safe, then in-person live racing can resume.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would agree to that. That's not a problem.
Chair, I can make a. Vice Chair Olson, go ahead. I was just, I'm happy to make a motion. I think that we're all in, it seems like we're all on the same page here and on agreement. I will preface that my, I think this does need to be in writing, just so that we can all be on the same page and have clear expectations and can be held accountable. So I appreciate too, you know, Mr. Sims kind of verbally agreeing to those general terms, but appreciate he would need to review and sign that attestation. So I am going to tack on a potential alternative if that attestation is not signed. And for that, I just want to understand from staff, will it be possible, I'm assuming it will be possible to get that attestation drafted in over to Mr. Sims today?
If I may, this is Jean Galvin. I will draft that attestation and have it sent over to the executive director and Anna in a very, you know, within an hour or so, and then they can forward it for signature.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to make a motion. You have to offer Turf Paradise a non-disciplinary agreement and attestation that there will be no live racing by Turf Paradise until further order of the commission, so that repairs to the track can be made, and those repairs will be overseen by the commission staff. And once the permittee believes that the tracks are in safe condition, then Hisa will evaluate in conjunction with department staff, and verification, or lack thereof, of track safety will be reviewed and approved of by board staff and the commission's chair.
And I would amend that. I would amend that to include the staff as well as the commission chair, myself, as Ms. Galvin had suggested.
Yes, yes, of course. Board staff and commission chair. And I'm sorry, just if I could finish my motion, not done yet. Upon receipt of satisfactory track safety, in-person live racing will resume. That attestation must be signed today, November 1st, 2024. If the attestation is not signed by this conclusion of the day, then I would move summarily to suspend. However, with the attestation being signed, the hope is to not get there.
One comment, this is Jerry Sims. Could you send a copy also to my general manager, Mr. Francia?
Yes, sir. She'd make sure everybody gets copies.
Yeah, okay.
I would second that motion.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Thank you. I have a motion by Vice Chair Olson, and a second by Madam Chair Contreras.
Excuse me.
Yes, who is that?
This is Mandy Hagan. I'm questioning, are you including training in that time period also, or just live racing?
No, ma'am. That's live racing, and the training or training track can be addressed separately and independently between Mr. Francia and anybody that wants to be involved in taking care of that decision. But at this point, the motion is simply there will be no horses on the main track until such time that it is deemed safe for the horses.
Well, that's one question.
Ma'am, we've got a motion, we've got a motion on the table. We'll get back to you. I won't prevent you from speaking, but let us finish our motion. We've got a first and second on us.
Yes. Seconded by Madam Chair, I will call the row. Madam Chair French Contreras?
Yes.
Vice Chair Olson? Commissioner Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
With a total of four yeses, thank you. That motion passes.
Thank you. All right. You want to continue your comment regarding training?
Madam Chair, Lloyd Yotha with the HBPA, I have a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
This does, this motion does not interfere with us continuing with our efforts to get the track ready for Sunday night for a Monday morning Hysa inspection to be able to race on Tuesday. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. If you can get us a good report, you can run on Tuesday.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Any other comments? I will, I will say that if something can be done on the training track and it's safe, and Mr. Francia wants to accept additional staff, or Mr. Sims wants to pay additional individuals to get that training track ready, that will lead that to the commission staff to oversee that and make sure that everything's fine. But at this point, I think that's secondary to getting this track ready to run. I do appreciate the concerns and problems with not being able to at least breeze these horses. But we're going to address that separately. There's, we've got to get this track up and running. So with that, do I have any other comments before I ask for a motion? To adjourn?
Another, Lloyd Yotha with the HBPA, another point of information, if I may.
Yes, sir.
The track, the grandstands and the clubhouse will be open tomorrow for Breeders' Cup. We will have food and beverage. The cover charge, to my understanding, has been waived. So those trainers, owners, spectators, fans, horse players are all welcome to come to the track and enjoy a day of racing via satellite with the Del Mar Breeders' Cup. Please come and enjoy the day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I do, this is.
Go ahead.
This is Mandy Holland. I have another question concerning racing on Tuesday and Wednesday. I could ask the commission. I know that the stewards have been making notice that if you scratch your horse because you don't want to race that day, or there's a better race coming, that you'll be fined or you'll be suspended for three days. I'm just, I'm a little fearful and nervous with the lack of training and the lack of confidence in the surface that we may see a scratchathon on Tuesday and Wednesday from trainers. And I'm just wondering how the stewards are prepared to potentially deal with that as well.
Excellent question. Mr. Francia, is that something you can address, or perhaps division staff?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I was dealing with a text I just got.
That's okay.
The, could the question be repeated, or is it too long to repeat the question?
No, no.
I'll repeat it. No, no, she, I'll, I'll repeat it. Yeah, this is Dr. Holland. And, um, so my question is, is that the racing stewards, um, and it's printed in the overnight, have put trainers on notice that if they intend to scratch a horse because they don't want to race, maybe because there's a better race the next week or in a few days, um, that they will punish the trainer by not allowing that horse to enter for three days and potentially face a fine. And, um, I have a, an apprehension and a fear that Tuesday and Wednesday, if racing is going to commence, that a lot of these trainers who have not been able to train their horses will scratch based on apprehension of training surface and lack of trainability. And I'm just wondering if the stewards have a comment or are prepared to address that?
Uh, I, I don't, uh, make decisions for the stewards. However, I would make a recommendation that giving what you're describing, I would recommend to the stewards consideration in this matter because of circumstances. So the trainers are not, uh, levied with fines or, uh, anything else because of what we're dealing with.
Right. I just, I feel that the stewards need to make a public comment concerning that due to the circumstances at hand. They can't, I know during inclement weather, I know that trainers can scratch due to track conditions. But if we get approval from Heisa that the track is safe, I feel like that, that conditional scratch would not be waived. But yet the lack of trainability and getting horses out would make some trainers apprehensive to turn around and run their horses right away without training available.
And your, your concerns are noted. Do we have anybody available from the stewards to make comment at this meeting?
You have Jason Hart, um, with his hand up. Okay, go ahead, sir, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in situations where we have inclement weather or any kind of, um, any kind of adversity like we do now, the stewards have shown in the past that we are reasonable. There is no reason to, uh, think that we would be unreasonable. We would definitely take this into consideration and see that people haven't been able to train their horses for several days and make a decision. So, um, that's, that's not something that would really be a problem here in situations like this. It never is when we have dilemmas like this and it won't be in the future. We'll always, uh, try to accommodate the horsemen within reason.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your accommodations. Um, Anna, is there anybody else before we wrap up?
Um, Mr. Nolan.
Mr. Nolan, I give you one minute.
Yes, I'll be very brief. Uh, and, and it's a point of law that anything done at this meeting is being done on an un-agendaized item. And I want that on the record that this, the item on the agenda is not what's been discussed. And that is now on the record and I find it to be an un-agendaized item that you're dealing with. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Olson, Mr. John. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Anna?
Thank you. I have a motion by Vice Chair Olson and a second by Commissioner Coolidge. I will call the row. Madam Chair Contreras?
Yes.
Vice Chair Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Thank you. With a total of four, it is now 2:34 PM and this meeting has adjourned. Thank you. If everyone can please exit the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.